All right, let's call to order the regular council meeting here Monday, June 20th, at the WCO Neil Arena Complex. We are being streamed through Zoom, Facebook, our friends CHGO are here, and of course, the in-person option. So, we will get underway with the recording of attendance, and it's great to see all members of council are in attendance. And I want to recognize that we're in the unceded traditional territory of the Pesca Tuamagadi people. I'll be looking for a mover to approve the agenda, circulate it. I've got Counselor Hurdle, second by Counselor Heenan. I do note that we do have, however, a motion under new business that maybe we could amend as well. So, I'll be looking for a mover to amend to include the new business, which is for the public. It's the subject, the King Street Road Closure Request for Farmer's Market, June 30th. I was wondering if you'd be... So, Counselor Hurdle and Counselor Heenan will move to amend the agenda. All in favor of approving this amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is everybody, so at this point, we'll approve the agenda. So, I'll need a mover and a seconder. Is that still Counselor Hurdle, Counselor Heenan? Any questions, any additions, changes to the agenda? Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, Your Worship.
That is everybody that has been approved. We're getting into the conflict of interest. Anybody would like to declare any this evening? Seeing none, which brings us into our presentations. We technically have three tonight, so we will remind presenters to try to keep it to 15 minutes or less, as we have a number of motions, and we'll try to keep it under two and a half hours. The first presentation is actually from our planner, Senior Planner for the Town of St. Andrews, which is Alexander Gopin. He's doing a presentation on Municipal Plan Amendment, MP 20-01. It's the Municipal Plan 20-01 for rezoning and generalized future land use map change for 302 Moat Drive, PID 01325521, Compass Housing, Inc. At this point, over to you, Mr. Gopin.
All right. Are you gonna do the presentation over there, Paul?
Yeah, just give me two seconds.
It's nice to see everybody in person. Haven't been actually in these council chambers before, and it's a lot better than it was the last time I was here, because everybody wedged in over there. All right. So, it is... The proposed amendment is MP 20-06, and that is an amendment to the Municipal Plan, MP Awesome. So, for those of you who know town, this is where the Blue Moon Motel used to be. It's two acres, it's vacant now. There was a fire there, and after some back and forth, eventually, all the buildings there were removed. The applicant, Compass Housing, Inc., is requesting a rezoning to the High Density Multiple Residential Zone, MR2. The property is currently zoned tourist commercial, and those properties have different designations in the municipal plan. So, before the rezoning can happen, the municipal plan map needs to be amended. So, technically, that's what this presentation is about, but it is... It is the rezoning really is the triggering factor here, and that process will happen as well. I believe there are some motions for that tonight. There will be a public hearing for that, assuming it is moved so, and the views of PAC as well. So, next slide. I had some animations set up, and I figured they wouldn't work when I sent the presentation to Paul, so that's fine. Supposed to come with the first picture on top. So, that's a street view shot from when the buildings were still there. I think most people drive past this every day or so, so hopefully, you're familiar with the site. Again, on the bottom left, the most recent aerials still show the old motel's buildings there. And then, on the bottom right, that is the proposed site plan. I believe it might be tweaked a little bit. The current one would require variance, and speaking with the applicant, I think there is no issue moving things around a little bit to avoid any variances. So, next slide, please, Paul. So, these are the policies in the municipal plan that I think are relevant for this proposal. There's nothing really that would go against it, and in my opinion, these are all pretty much in support of the amendment. So, on environment and climate change, the policy about efficient and sustainable land uses, mixing uses and density, support pedestrian movement, improve energy efficiency. This would be 42 new units in a serviced area, and it's not right downtown, but it's really a five to 10-minute bike ride down, or, you know, maybe a 10 to 20-minute walk. So, certainly, still a very good location, and it would improve energy efficiency. And again, having 42 units in an already serviced area, you don't need new sewers, new water lines, new roads. That's a really good thing. Economic policies provide an economic climate conducive to investment, growth of your unemployment opportunities, protect and enhance the quality of life in St. Andrews. So, I think it's no secret that the lack of housing in town right now is impacting the economy. I believe there's some restaurants downtown that are still trying to get open, and they can't hire anybody. And one of the reasons they can't hire people is because there's nowhere for those people to live in town. And on that subject, housing policies, it's not just about the economy. There's a lot of folks in town, and folks who want to live in town, seniors, students, other special needs populations. And this policy speaks to ensuring new housing is appropriate to the character of town as well. And these new units, I believe the applicant will speak more about what they're hoping to achieve with them, but from what they've told me, this would serve many of those demographics and certainly meet a need in town. Go to the next slide. So, as everybody knows, we're in a housing crisis, and rental housing is probably the greatest housing in the community right now. We just actually have some new data on the current situation, and the vacancy rate is 2.5%, which is lower than you want it, and that actually translates to two units being available throughout town. That was when we did it in March of this year, so that's a snapshot in time, but we did the same study back in 2020, and things have not moved much. And in that time, I think only three apartment units have been added to town. So, 42 units would be a significant improvement on that vacancy rate. As I said, it's already serviced, and the applicant has a track record in St. Andrews. This is the same team of people who developed Anchor's Landing, and they also recently in St. Stephen did the Beacon. So, they have experience doing these types of projects. And again, I think they might speak to it more after, but from our discussions, they wanted to include larger units, two bedrooms and more, which is a big need for families. And they wanted to keep rents affordable, and affordable is obviously slightly subjective, and they might speak more to that. Finally, on the last slide, because this will be a rezoning, there is the opportunity for council to enter into a development agreement with the applicant, and I would recommend that council does so. The things you'd want to include in that, at least, are timelines, stormwater management, servicing, landscaping, and securities, and you have some experience doing this with the Van Horn Garden Homes. Development agreement similar to that would certainly be advisable. So, that's really it for the planning points. I don't know if you want to do questions for me now, or if you want to go to the applicant, but I'll be here all night.
Perfect. Thank you, Xander. I do know that most members of council are aware of this particular project, obviously, but I wanted to open the floor up to see if anyone had any question related to Xander's particular portion. Mr. Spear.
Just as a reminder to people, what would be considered a healthy vacancy rate or an acceptable in this type of housing?
There's... People say between 3% and 5%. In my opinion, that is less true when you get into very small populations in rural communities. And just in the research I've been doing, just for example, when we did this study, Black's Harbor has a vacancy rate of almost 11%, but that's two units there. So, when you think about what people need in a market to have choice and to have, you know, flexibility if they're in a bad situation with a landlord, two units, even if it shows 11% or 2.5%, seems like it's close to that healthy vacancy rate. It's definitely lower than you want to be, and 3% to 5% is what people say, but I think if you can aim for that higher end of that, that's a good position to be in.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. Thank you very much, Xander.
You're very welcome.
Before I switch over to the presentation from Compass Housing, I did want to get out before and talk a little bit about the challenge. If you look at the challenge and say, "There isn't having two units as a snapshot in the month of March," arguably, March is when you'd see the vacancies the highest. So, you can imagine what it looks like in April, May, or in September, when students are looking. The reality is, is we don't have enough rental units in the Town of St. Andrews. I don't know about everyone to the left and right of me, but there's been countless seniors that have let council know that they were not able to downsize their home because there was no rental or even purchase options for smaller units. There are single parents that have personally messaged me to say, "I sure hope something changes in this town, because I can't afford to live here anymore." We've got young workers, as indicated by Xander, is we have many businesses that are barely holding on, and the owners are working seven days a week just to keep their business open. And I know that having workers isn't just subject to housing. I know that if you get into like restaurant industry, there is some trends across Canada, and if you look at enrollment in schools and things like that, they are down, but the fact that we have a housing problem has magnified that. And then, when we got this council, when we were all running to sit at this table, all of us on CHGO, when we talked about our interview, gave reference to one of the number-one challenges, they think, and that they wanted to be a part of and help find solutions for, was housing. From there, this council that got elected met very early in our mandate, about a month or two months in. We all got together with staff, we all listed our priorities with staff, and the number-one priority for this council was housing. After that, this council went through a budget priority setting, and we determined that we were going to make it a reality, and we allocated $900,000 aside to make a difference in housing. That, so far, has led to two development agreements, or two projects that are going, and not to say that they're not affordable, but they haven't really hit that threshold that we've been looking to get to. So, I'm really pleased that council and staff have been working towards a potential partnership. There's a process that has to go through, and we're definitely going to be open-minded during it, but we think we might have an avenue here to, as a council and staff, to really make a difference in this community. We've looked at multiple options with multiple developers. We've looked at private developers, we've looked at not-for-profit housing organizations, we've looked at buying land on our own. So, we've looked at a lot of different avenues, but when we got down to this one, this seemed to be the one that we were the most keen about. So, with that being said, I just wanted to recognize council, that's to my left and my right, and staff, because when you ran for Town Council, you didn't just say it, you're actually living up to it. And I know that in a perfect world, we would have got going a lot quicker, but the reality is, is to move this town forward, we're not just making decisions for the next one or two years. These are decisions that have impacts for 20, 30, 40 years. So, I wanted to set the groundwork, just to recognize that this is a lot of conversations that councils had. I know people in the community have been waiting, and I'm really forward to... Looking forward to welcoming Tressa Bevington on behalf of Compass Housing, Inc., to do a presentation on the housing development for 302 Moat Drive, which again is PID 01325521. And I believe Mrs. Bevington is joining us via Zoom right now.
Hi, um, can everyone hear me?
Just give us a sec for a little more volume in the council chamber.
Okay.
There you go. We can hear you.
Okay. Everyone can hear me? Okay? Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you so much, Xander, for the first part of the presentation. I'm really looking forward to presenting tonight and hopefully giving some more information on what we have been working on over the past six months, really hard, and hopefully, we'll be able to share with you and answer any questions that anybody has. Yeah, so, Paul, if you just wanna...
Go ahead, Tressa.
Yeah, thank you. So, if anyone doesn't know who I am, my name is Tressa Bevington. I grew up in St. Andrews, and my family's been a part of the community for almost 40 years. I'm really excited to present to you tonight, because this has been a long time coming. We've been working really hard on everything by the... Over the past few months, working with the town office and also with Xander to see if this is something that could become a reality. We have been keeping our eye on this property for a while, and with the housing crisis that is going on in St. Andrews right now, we decided that this is the time that we need to move forward, to do something to help the community and to help everyone that is in the community, because this is going to really hit all the different businesses in town and all the different aspects. I just wanted to say, too, that we see there's lots of development that's going on in St. Andrews with the Garden Homes, which we're very supportive of, and we think that's fantastic. But this is really what we need also, is this high-density housing, and this is a fantastic place for it. We did look at other properties in town, but this is really the... This is really going to be the best place for something of what we're planning. So, just, Paul, the next slide, please. So, Xander did touch on, and thank you so much, Xander, that my company has recently built two properties in Charlotte County. The first one is Anchor's Landing, and that is a 37-unit apartment building that we have. We opened in July of 2017, and building off the momentum of that, we went over to St. Stephen to build a 50-unit apartment building there, which was very welcomed by the town and much needed over there as well. But building off that momentum, we want to focus back on to St. Andrews to have some units put into place there. Just the next slide, please. So, I just wanted to share with you today, these are the preliminary things that we are working on. I wanted to show some renderings of some concepts of what we're working on that would fit really nicely into the neighborhood. So, we're looking at a two-level, 42-unit apartment building. We are looking at 36 two-bedrooms and six one-bedroom apartments. All of the apartments will have office space in them, and this is hopefully to help out the growing number of people that are working from home or just need that extra space when they're not... So, they're not... It's not so much in their bedroom, their computer is. All the apartments will be very spacious, open concept, a very high-quality build, as our other buildings are. We are going to have some really great things in the building, such as onsite laundry facility for anybody who's living there. All of the apartments will be energy-efficient. I can get into that later. But yeah, we just really wanted to have a nice building that kind of mimicked the size of the motel, where it's like longer, just to tuck into the neighborhood. We are going to be very cognizant of surrounding neighbors pertaining to lighting and trying to keep as many trees as possible and things like that to make the grounds look really nice. We're also planning on having a trail to connect through Anchor's Landing and through the compass, so that anyone coming from the subdivision can get through these properties as well, which will be nice to tie the two areas together as well. We are working really hard to have construction to start the beginning of 2023, the spring. There's obviously lots of moving parts to that right now with supply chain and interest rates, but we're really trying to work with all of our contacts to make this happen as soon as we can, because we know that there's a lot of urgency to the project, and we feel that, and we want to make this happen. One thing that Xander did touch on is, and the big question that everyone's going to ask, is rental price. And the rental price that we're working on, it's going to be, and Xander is right, affordable is very subjective, but we want to keep this, the cost, the monthly cost, as low as possible to everyone who is living in the building, so that it is something that's attainable for people who are working and living in St. Andrews, that they can afford to live in a place like this and call it their home. So, we're very excited about this project. We hope that everyone in the town is excited about the prospect of it, because it's really going to help out, as you guys have spoken about, really all aspects of the town. It's really... It really affects everything, so we're really excited for this, and I hope I can answer any questions that anybody would have about this project.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bevington. I'll look to my left and right and over to staff. Is there any questions at this time for Mrs. Bevington? Seeing none at this time, it's good to put this out to the public for sure, to let them know where we're going. There is a process that is involved with this, including later in this particular council package, we'll be talking about going to first reading on the Municipal Plan Amendment as well. We'll be setting a date for a public hearing of objections, so there is a process to go. But as well, before it is finalized in the Town of St. Andrews for the public's interest, the Town Council will be publicly voting on the development agreement. So, there'll be more... Lots more details on the town's involvement, but first, it has a process to go through. But unless anyone else has any other questions to my left or right, I think we're good for this evening, just doing one last check. We're good. Thank you very much, Mrs. Bevington, for joining us and sharing that information. We're looking forward to having many more conversations and going through the process with the public to make sure that it's transparent and that we're working with everybody in the surrounding area and anyone that may have concerns. And the last thing I'll say is, a hearing of objections is later in this package, but a hearing of objections is also an opportunity of a hearing of support as well. So, if you're someone in this community that needs this, I would encourage you to certainly write in to Town Council, just because sometimes when you hear a lot of yeses and nos, it helps provide a lot more clarity than if all you hear is nos. So, thank you for your time this evening, and we're going to continue to move on with our package. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. All right, now, we're moving on. We have our presenters in person, so welcome. It just says Charlie Bartlett. I'm not sure if Miss Bean's joining him or not, but it's a presentation on the liquor license permit request for 182 Water Street, which most of us know as the Char and Chowder.
Char and Chowder. Good evening. Thanks very much for letting Kelly, me, and my business partner, and I present to you, I guess, what has been a right-out-of-the-blue issue that we've come... We've been faced with at the Char and Chowder. Thank you also for letting us put two faces to the letter that I understand that you've had the opportunity to take a look at. And just, I wanted to sort of review a couple of things that were in that letter. I don't want to bore you with the whole thing, but one of them is the business model that we operated under last year and want to continue operating under this year. And it actually goes to some of the things that Xander brought up with labor and with waitstaff and being able to get those people to be able to serve well and have them in our employee pool. It is very difficult. So, last year, we came up with a model that we thought was terrific. What it did was let us use less waitstaff and be able to put the people that we had really against the food and really make as much of an authentic maritime experience, char and chowder. So, we think it went really well. In fact, we got an awful lot of great reviews, and especially heartening were reviews from people from out of town who said, "Wow, this is different, this is great, and it really has served it well." So, with that, we were able to take the people, focus them on that, and give the experience we did. What's important to note, a key element of that experience that we were able to provide was something called a special facilities license, which is a liquor license that we were granted last year. In fact, it came up because of... There is a similar concept up in Moncton that was using that, and they said, "Why don't you..." This is good. So, until six days ago, everything was cool. And six days ago, I say this because we do have our act together. And six days ago, we became aware that they... The liquor people had made a mistake and awarded us a liquor license that wasn't appropriate, apparently, for our facility. And I'm... We're not here to argue that, but we are here to hope for a solution that they put on the table. And the solution they put on the table was, you should get a lounge license. Lounge license will do everything that the special facilities license let you do, which is have people order at the window, maybe get a drink or not, walk to the table, and then we run the food to them, or they go to the pickup table. So, order table, order window, and pickup window. And that will work very well, and it would work well, again, with the lounge license. So, they, in fact, said to us, "We think you should, you know, be looking for that as a part of the solution to this mistake we all made." And so, what I guess is happening now is they have said, "We could provide that to you, why don't you go get that?" And lo and behold, there was a bylaw on the books with St. Andrews that does not allow for new lounge licenses. So, what we're here to do is to talk about that and to see how urgently we could move that along and be able to get a lounge license. I know that there... I don't know if I'm asking for a temporary. I think more appropriately, I'm asking for a bylaw review that would be able to help us out and do that. As you can imagine, this is a bit of a surprise. We're trying to open. It's... Candidate is coming, and it would be anything we can do to get this moved along as soon as possible would be extremely appreciated. Okay?
Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate that. Any member of council have a question? You'll note that later in the package, maybe we can even bring it forward since the applicants are here, because I'm sure they'd like to be here in case any questions come up from that debate. But later on, we will be discussing potentially repealing a paragraph within the zoning bylaw that would basically allow licensed premises featuring a lounge be subject to terms and conditions that may be imposed by council, meaning that we may be able to adjust that, but part of that would be unfortunately for the applicants, a bit of a delay, simply the fact that legally, in order to change that, we do have to have a hearing of objections. So, does anyone have this time? Again, we are going to debate this later in tonight's meeting. Maybe we'll even bring it forward, but does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bartlett?
I should have mentioned also, which was, we're not a drinks place. And I think the reason why this was put in place was really about watering holes in the old St. Andrews, and maybe that was... And we totally understand that. We don't want to open past 11:00, right? If you look at our numbers, we do quite a bit below the standard. One-third of your revenue is typically alcohol, drinks. That's not our case. We're much below that. So, we were happy to take a condition on that, which would be open till a certain time, which we thought would be helpful in the discussion.
Perfect. Yeah, I believe in your letter, it stated that your drink-to-food ratio is under industry standards, meaning that it's primarily an eating establishment.
Quite a bit.
Any... Counselor Heenan?
Yes, Your Worship. I was just taking a couple of notes. I would feel that in the prudence of time, that we would look at a temporary revision of the bylaw versus the review, because as you mentioned, Your Worship, it would take a longer time in order to get the review done. That would be my... That's just my feeling.
Perfect.
Thank you, Your Worship.
I'd have to check with Mr. Gopin, but I don't believe that's legally possible.
It isn't?
No.
Xander.
I can tell you that Mr. Bartlett appreciates your spirit.
No, it's not.
Any other questions? Seeing none. So, thank you very much. That does conclude the presentations for this evening. We have no minutes, as we do that on our other monthly meeting, as well as communications, and our staff report was done in the previous meeting. So, that'll get us right into the introduction, consideration of passing of bylaws and motions. I was wondering if, for the sake of our presenters, if council would call it a friendly amendment to jump ahead, assuming staff will forgive me, to, I guess it would be six... Be under six, planning and economic development, which is Counselor Heenan. It'd be item number three, which is a discussion on Amendment Z22-03 to the zoning bylaw, Z22-01, regarding a text amendment to Section 3.33 for licensed premises, and this is PED 220613.
Counsel, please note, it's on page 75.
Page 75. All right, so we'll jump ahead to that, counsel. Thank you for entertaining that, because it's a long meeting. I don't want you to necessarily sit there.
Thank you.
We should go.
No. No. This is a public forum, so you're certainly welcome. I don't believe we have any intention of going to close session. If we do, we'll certainly let everybody know, and we'll probably, at that point, take it back to the end of the meeting, just for essence of everybody here. So, before us, it's not a straight-up motion, so I guess I'll speak to it at this point. It does give us some background on the process, but in particular, it's blank under the motion right now, but I do note on page 76, there is a recommendation that we go to first reading to bylaw, Z22-03, as mentioned before. Question for Mr. Spears, or something you'd want to add, but I'm wondering, can we go to first reading tonight?
I used to be the IT guy, believe it or not. Now, under... On page 75, under the recommended motion of councils, each of those are the motions that would begin this in process, each of those separate lines.
Okay.
So, if council so wants to, you can proceed with each of those.
Okay.
And the only way to do is a text amendment to the bylaw, which requires community input and stuff. And so, right now, this unfortunately wouldn't give Mr. Bartlett the opportunity to go up tomorrow and get his license, but it will start the process, and we'll be able to get input and hopefully, you know, if council wishes to proceed, we can have it wrapped up the next month or so.
Perfect. And counsel, if you have opposition to it, that's fine, but by not taking care of this tonight, when's our next regular meeting? Two weeks?
Wonderful.
So, we'd be delaying it even further. We don't. So, it's not normally the way we go. So it's not normally the way we go about it. Normally, the motions are kind of advertised and listed, but this is obviously something to, very important to getting a business open in downtown St. Andrews, so we've been flexible in the past. So, counsel, I guess what I'll request, we'll read the background before, but I would need, in order to bring this forward, I'd need a mover and a seconder, kind of like we normally do. Would anyone like to, Counsel Neil, seconder, Counsel Blanchard? Okay, so we have a mover and a seconder, so at this point, that's good enough for me. Counsel Heenan, if you want to read the background and stop right before the recommended motions, and at that point, we'll read them one by one, like we normally do. Does that make sense to you?
Thank you, Your Worship and counsel. Yes. This is PED 220613, discussion on amendment of Z 22-03 to zoning bylaw Z 22-01 regarding text amendment to section 3.33 for licensed premises. The town of St. Andrews has been approached by the owners of Char and Chowder for the consideration of an amendment to the zoning bylaw, section 3-33, licensed premises. Please see attached staff report and draft zoning bylaw Z 22-03 for background information. Staff are seeking to complete a text amendment change to the bylaw that would allow for business to apply for lounge licenses with terms and conditions to be stipulated by council and would be enforced by the public safety of the province of New Brunswick under a lounge liquor license, provided our motions for consideration for council regarding amendment Z 22-03. The following steps would be taken as part of the process if council wishes to move the amendment forward. One, first reading. Two, public hearing of objections. Three, obtain views of the PAC. Four, second reading. Five, third and final reading. And I'll stop there, Your Worship.
Perfect. Okay, can I, so you? Yeah.
Under that first one, that you make a motion?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Recommended motions of council. That council grants leave for the first reading to the text amendment Z 22-03 to the town of St. Andrews zoning bylaw Z 22-01 for section 3.33 bracket 2, licensed premises.
Thank you, Counsel Heenan. Seconder, Counsel Gomishel, discussion on that motion. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, Your Worship.
That's everybody that has been approved, so I will go ahead and do the first reading to the text amendment. This is bylaw number 22-03, a bylaw to amend bylaw 22-01, being the zoning bylaw for the town of St. Andrews, being enacted by the council of the town of St. Andrews as follows. By repealing, one, by repealing paragraph two in section 3.33 and substitute the following. Two, applications for licensed premises featuring a lounge will be subject to such terms and conditions as may be imposed by council upon the lounge license. This has been read the first time on June 20th, 2022. Next motion, Counsel Heenan.
Your Worship and counsel. That council requests the views of PAC Planning Advisory Committee of the town of St. Andrews as per section 110 of the Community Planning Act to the text amendment Z 22-03 to the town of St. Andrews zoning bylaw Z 22-01 for section 3.33 bracket 2, licensed premises. I so move.
Seconder. Counsel Gomishel again. Discussion. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is everybody, and we're onto the last one.
Thank you, Your Worship. That council sets the date of Monday, July the 4th, 2022, at 6:45 PM at the WCO O'Neil Arena Council Chambers for public hearing of objections as per section 111 of the Community Planning Act to the text amendment Z 22-03 to the town of St. Andrews zoning bylaw Z 22-01 for section 3.33 bracket 2, licensed premises. I so move.
Seconder, Counsel Neil won that by just a hair. I'm going to keep my eye to the left more for the next one. And that is the earliest date that we can do it, is that correct? Just because I know every day matters.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, Your Worship.
That is everybody, and that has been approved as well. Thank you very much. At this point, speaking of Deputy Mayor Akaji, we're going to make our way back to the Finance and Administration. Deputy Mayor Akaji, in regards to the Katie's Cove gates.
Thank you very much, Your Worship and counsel. My first one is FA, oh, sorry, FA 220614. And it is up, unbudgeted repairs to Katie's Cove gates. So the background is this. In May of 2022, during a routine flushing cycle of Katie's Cove, a log struck one of the open gates and tore it off of its brackets. After a search, staff was able to locate the gate and hardware. A diver was brought in to retrieve the gate and parts. We have sent the gate to the welding contractor that has provided a quote of $13,000 to repair and install the gates. It is anticipated to take up one month, up to one month, to complete the work and should be installed by mid-July. As this was not a budgeted item, council should provide a motion to authorize the expenditure. Therefore, our action and motion is, council approves an unbudgeted expenditure of $13,000 plus HST for the repairs and installation of the flap valve gate at Katie's Cove, and I so move, Your Worship.
Seconder for that one, Counsel Heenan. Discussion on this motion. Counsel Hurdle.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Just a quick question for Mr. Spear. Just curious as to know, with a $13,000 item, where it would come from in terms of?
The most likely place will be out of the general operating reserve funds that can go operations. We'll have a look closer to the end of the year, because there have been savings in some of our capital projects. So by October, November, we'll be able to make a better recommendation, but at this short notice, we certainly have money set aside for events like these.
Thank you.
Perfect. And I will add that if we are short at the end of the year, and there is something in the tourism accommodation levy fund, I would say that this definitely contributes to tourism if that wasn't able to operate. I think, I don't think anyone would argue the, the spend behind that. So there seems to be multiple options, but we certainly don't want a deficit at the end of the year as a result. Any other discussion?
I just think this is, sorry.
Go ahead.
I think this is a necessary thing that we need to do, especially when we have the dragon boat, and it needs to have the Katie's Cove, so it would be nice to have the gate operating well so that they can use their boats. I know there's a lot of students that are now becoming dragon boaters besides us, so it would be nice to have that.
Thank you, and I know Katie's Cove Inc. is, is trying to continue to do repairs, so it's important to have that in as well for them. Any other comments? Otherwise, I'll call a question. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's everybody again, and that one has been approved. The next one, Deputy Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Your Worship.
I just wanted to warn you, there's an extra comment there on the 832,600, three lines down, so it doesn't throw you off. It looks like 8 million. It's supposed to be 832,000.
So that's not the, yeah.
Yeah.
Especially, I think, certainly. Okay. Well, we don't have that kind of money. It'll come out of your salary. So my next motion is FA 220615, paving the parking lot at Point Park at Prince of Wales and Water Street. So during, the background is this. During the 2022 budget process, council budgeted $1,124,000 for the replacement of infrastructure on portions of Prince of Wales Street, Sophia Street, and Ernest Street. In April, council awarded the tender in the amount of $832,600 after the HST rebate. Town has a savings of $301,000. This was achieved because we issued the tenders in late winter prior to the large expected inflationary increases. Staff is proposing that as part of the current project, the parking lot adjacent to the Point Park at the corner of Prince of Wales and Water Street at the trail location be paved with part of the savings, as this is planned to be part of the exercise park in 2023. This would allow the area to be more accessible for those who need it. By doing this project now, we reduce the construction along the area next year and likely realize savings as the paving crew is already in place, completing work in the area for this year's projects. See the attached document for a visual of the parking lot. So the motion is this, that council approves the paving of the park lot near the Van Horn Trail at the, at the Point Park at the corner of the Prince of Wales and Water Street for a price of $12,000 plus HST, and I so move, Your Worship.
Seconder. Counsel Gomishel. Discussion. Counsel Hurdle.
Thank you, Your Worship. I know it may seem like a, a small thing, but I guess every little bit that we do cover with asphalt increases heat capture in the town, so I'm just wondering if there is an option to possibly provide shading for the asphalt area? I know it's kind of a weird location to provide trees for, or some sort of tree cover, but is that something that we could possibly find a solution for?
Possibly. Part of the issue with that, Counselor, is that, that's kind of the wide-open view of Pass McQuaddie Bay there, so you'd probably have, especially from adjacent homeowners, any type of growth there probably wouldn't be appreciated. There might be room for shrubs, but any trees that are going to grow to any height would probably be of a concern to them. So I appreciate your comment, but again, it was just, I guess, we're thinking of, from the accessibility portion, where the park itself, where the exercise park has accessible components to it, and so that's why we brought forth the suggestion.
And I think the, the other reason it got brought forward is because the crews are already there with gear unloaded, and it's substantial savings versus deciding to do it later, it'd be twice the cost probably, if not more. Counsel Blanchard.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, where we do have a, a list through infrastructure of projects that need to be done over the next, you know, there's a schedule over the next several years, why this project maybe was chosen over some others that might be priorities as well, or were others considered with this surplus? I'm just wondering if, if, if it could be better used maybe on some really high priority streets that need to be resurfaced, or is it just because other, underground infrastructure work needs to be done at the same time? I'm just wondering what's, if there's anything going on there that could be prioritized maybe, as opposed to just the, the parking lot?
Well, it's complicated, but the easiest answer is for $12,000, you won't do much of a street. You'd only do probably about a tenth of a block. And so instead of rushing through a whole bunch of stuff, at least with these surpluses, we can carry them over to future years and apply it to a larger scale plan than making quick choices. Again, as most of council's aware, there's actually work going right at that location right now. It's not even like they're at another part of town and moving over. They're right there doing infrastructure work, so it also reduces any more construction next year. So the residents have been in inconvenience this year. There'll be a quick paving crew next year to do the top coat anyway, but it, it just seemed to ask to go to get that all prepped and stuff. It'd be opportune time to do it.
Just if I could follow up?
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate, like I said, $12,000 wouldn't do much, but the surplus, the savings was 300,000, so I'm just wondering, like I said, if, if there were other maybe projects considered that could, we could take advantage of that money this year as opposed to, like, I understand we could carry it over, but again, if we have crews there or in the area, could we not take advantage, you know, potentially with the way things are going? I don't know where costs are going to go. If they're going to be more expensive next year to do the same type of project, then maybe we could take advantage, or will prices come down? I don't know at this point, so I just, I'm just wondering if other things had been considered.
Not really. I guess to be perfectly honest, but we're putting an asphalt contract out that's going to tender soon. What we might be able to do, if council likes, is to review the, with some of those savings, what we could do and extend that tender, which will be carried out in the fall now, and council can deliberate then, you know, over the summer, if they'd like to add those components on to this.
Counsel Heenan, thank you.
Yes, Your Worship and counsel. I had my driveway done, it was $6,000. And so I'm saying 12,000 to do a parking lot for accessibility and, and a cleanup and make it not full of water holes, I think is an absolutely wonderful decision, because that's, I mean, that's a very good price. You get nothing paid for $12,000 now. So that's just my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Heenan. Anyone else? Counsel Hurdle?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just one final question. Just when it gets, gets busy, i- is there a potential to have some sort of fencing or bollards along the trail, so when people don't park on the trail, if the parking lots get, gets full? Gets full?
Yeah, more than likely, it's, it's a good point, and, you know, we'd have to find something that could allow people to get through, but certainly, that's a good idea, and we'll bring that to the attention of our operations manager, take that into consideration.
Giving those posts, right? Yeah. Okay. All right, council, is there's anything new? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is everybody, that has been approved. And Deputy Mayor, I believe you have another one.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Your Worship and counsel. So my next one is FA 220617. And the subject is the waived fees requested from the Family Resource Center of Charlotte County, Inc. And the background is this. The town of St. Andrews has received a wave of fees request for the use of the WC O'Neil Arena by the Family Resource Center of Charlotte County. They provide programming for youth 6 and under for socialization, learning, and activities. Programs are tailored to the needs and interests of the participants. The purpose of this agreement coming forward to the council as the waived fees policy P-21-01 allow for the CAO to waive fees for up to six uses. The request is for a more reoccurring program. This request is beyond the usage allowed and thus is coming to council for consideration. Please see the attached application form and the subsequent letter from Gail McLaughlin, Executive Director of the Family Resource Center of Charlotte County. So the action and motion is this, that council grants the chief administrator officer the rights to negotiate an agreement with the Family Resource Center of Charlotte County, Inc., to use space at the WC O'Neil Arena with terms and conditions beyond the waive, the waiving of fees policy P-21-01, and I so move, Your Worship.
A seconder for Deputy Mayor Akaji's motion, that's Counsel Hurdle. We do have another motion.
Why, I'm sorry.
We'll go back to it. That's okay, we can go back to it. Any discussion on this one? Counsel Hurdle.
Chatty tonight, sorry, Your Worship. Just, just one quick question, just regards to timeline. It looks as though the first request came to us in April, and I'm just curious to know if there was something that caused the delay to, to now?
I think they actually had an op, they had some funds to pay for it for a little while, is my understanding, but in order for it to be sustainable and ongoing, that they do require this at this point, is that correct?
That's correct, Your Worship. They're starting to wind down their services for the year, but they're really in anticipation of going back again this fall and winter.
Thank you.
They are running on limited funds, to say the least, so makes sense to review this sooner than later, so. Any other discussion? Call a question. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, Your Worship.
That is everybody, that has been approved. We will go back to page 16.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I skipped over it.
Try to speed the meeting up for me.
I did. Sorry. So FA 220616, and it's the outdoor fitness park budgetary discussion. So the background is this. Staff are seeking council's confirmation on the outdoor fitness park at the Point Park. For the purposes of budgeting, staff has purchased eight pieces of outdoor fitness equipment through the New Horizons for Seniors Grant. We note that the St. Andrews Outdoor Recreation and Trails, Inc., is currently seeking an ACOA grant to help cover the costs of the park. However, for the purposes of budgeting, staff are seeking the opinion of council to put funding in the 2023 budget to complete the park, with or without the grant funding. Please see the attached design of the park for preference. The park would be developed with full accessibility and standards in place. Features of the park would include, one, accessible brick pavers, same as the Elizabeth Street Pocket Park and Town Hall. Two, fall absorbent equipment platforms around the equipment. Three, bike racks and accessible hexagonal, hexagonal picnic tables, same as outside the Town Hall. Four, base coat or seal coat of asphalt for the accessible parking lot at the Point Park. And in the bracket, it says, seal coat if council approves the parking lot for 2022. And the fifth one is installation of accessible outdoor exercise equipment with sauna tubes and, and. and concrete. It is estimated with taxes that the project would cost $65,000. So, the motion is this, that council recommends the staff budget $65,000 to build the outdoor fitness park and Point Park for the 2023 budget, and I so move, your worship.
Secondor? Counselor Hurdle? Discussion? Counselor Blanchard?
Just for clarity and for me, if I remember back when we first sort of saw this, and I know it came to the council, I think even prior to, I think, to the previous council, this went from the committee fundraising to do the whole thing, to us doing, I think, the, what do they call it, the fall or the, what was it?
Base.
The base, yeah, the base, the base for the units, to now we're doing everything. I'm just curious how we got to this point, where the initial presentation that we saw, like I said, the Outdoor Recreation Trails, Inc., was essentially doing everything to the point where we are now, where we're being asked to do everything? Or is that the request to council, or are we just doing this as sort of a fallback to make sure that it gets done? I'm just trying to figure out the process that we, you know, how we got to this point.
Perfect. I'll throw it over to Mr. Spear, if you'd like.
Thank you, worship. So, it should be noted that as part of the original purchase of the equipment, Sorty did, the Trails, Inc., did put in $25,000 towards it, so they started that process. They were relying on some provincial and federal funding, which still may yet to come through. So, in order to get that, to get the equipment within their grant period and our own, we had money left over from the New Horizons grant to match it, so we were able to buy the eight pieces of equipment this year, and it's actually, will be delivered in the next few weeks.
So, council, just to note that the equipment cost in total for the eight pieces was around $56,000.
How much?
$56,000. So, there, with their $25,000 portion and our $25,000 for the New Horizons grant, and a little bit of taxes on top that we do, we get back, that's where there, we've already partnered within that, so the hope is, they are in final throes for their funding, and we're just waiting to hear back from them, so this is part of the process.
But, Counselor Blanchard, your point, it started with a request to space, and now we're going to be investing about $90,000 into the outdoor fitness equipment.
And it should be noted too, counsel, that when Sorty made the original presentation, they were thinking of only putting it on sauna tubes and not the extra brickwork and stuff, but with, because of the material there and the site where it is, we thought it would be in the best interest of everybody to keep it looking good, but also to keep it accessible and safe, that we invest in a proper foundation, and this, and because, as you know, the ground shifts there a little bit, it's easy to reset bricks and it is to lay cement foundation or a cement pad out there. So, this seemed to be the best solution in order to ensure that this thing will, you know, last basically forever. The equipment has a life of 10 to 15 years, they say, and then the actual base should be good for decades.
Normally, I would ask on that, why we wouldn't hold that up to budget conversations, but being completely candid, we don't know what influence we're going to have on budget conversations right now because of municipal reform. So, this is an opportunity to give staff some direction, but with that being said, we're talking about a dog park later, which also has requests, so why aren't we making a approval for a dog park to that point? Counselor Heenan?
Yes, your worship and council. I remember, and I went back to some notes from Sorty's presentation, and you're absolutely right, Counselor Blanchard, like it's taken on a new life. What I'm kind of wondering is, and just echoing even Counselor Blanchard, about the paving, that we have the money left over, is there a way we could do the park lot this year out of the money that's left over?
You mean underneath the equipment or the top?
Well, it says, "Park," it says, "Base coat or seal coat of asphalt for accessible parking lot at the Point Park."
We usually do, separate a year between the base and the coat to allow settling before we put the seal on, so that's why we even do our streets that way. So, the same streets working on infrastructure this year, we'll repave the second coat next year to make sure.
But my question is, you know, our savings that we're using, $12,000 of, on the paving parking lot at Point Park, we saved, can we use part of that saving to do the paving and reduce the overall cost of the 65,000?
My assumption is you went to the Capitol Boring Board for that money, and that would be a different purpose? Would that be?
No, no. Again, it goes back to that, and this is part of the reason we put this forward, because the paving in the previous motion was kind of dependent on this. If you weren't going to buy into having the park, there's no sense paving the gravel parking lot. And so, the paving we're doing this year is just to put a, what we call the base coat on it, and then next year, when the ground's had time to settle, we'll finish it off, and so that's included in that $65,000 to do the second half of the paving on that parking lot.
Okay. I understand that, but I'm still wondering about the surplus from the $300,000 we're saving over here. Can part of that be carried forward for the second year paving of this that's included in the 65,000? Can that be reduced because we're taking it from this $300,000 on the previous motion?
I guess, as the mayor said, it's a wee bit more complicated than that, but at the end of the day, if we're not using current funds or borrowing to do it, it means we're going to have more room in the future to do projects like this, and so, while, you know, we won't show a surplus next year of $300,000, we shouldn't, that, but we'll have the opportunity that our overall borrowing will be down significantly, and so, we'll have the opportunity to, if council chooses, to take on more borrowing to do these projects.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Hurdle?
Thank you, worship. I guess my question is, when it goes from being something that, you know, Sorty wants to put out here and that we support, to something that we are going to be footing the bill for, to me, it changes the nature of the ask, because it's not something that, you know, Sorty wants or that we want, but we have to make sure it's something that the taxpayers of St. Andrews also want. And, you know, in my time here so far, this isn't something that I've heard from people in the community that they want this, and so, if we're going to be paying for it, for those that have history going back to when this first came on the table, if they could speak possibly a little bit to, do the people of St. Andrews want this, and should we be paying for it?
Counselor Goumachelle?
Your worship, thank you. I do believe in the original presentation from Sorty, that they were hoping to have ACOA funding to cover all this, so that's where the discrepancy lies, and if I'm not mistaken, that ACOA funding was to be spent this year, was part of their ask of ACOA was that it would happen this year, so in putting it off to next year, that's where the 65 comes from, so.
The original ask was to put it on grass, essentially, and we kind of had conversations, I don't know if it was the last council or this one, but we didn't, I think it was this one, we didn't think it was going to be very visually appealing, and also, with people using it, the grass underneath will get torn up, and the other thing is, I did get a lovely red shirt from Jackson Levitt, and I am very cognizant of, we should make this community more accessible for everybody, so just something to consider as well. I think this is above what Sorty had actually asked for. This is adding that, you know, you see that park-type diagram? That's where that's coming into play. This is something that we're doing to make it a little bit more visually appealing when you drive around what I think is the most visually appealing place in town.
Counselor Blanchard?
Yeah, just further, I agree, like I said, and I think it was this council that had the conversation about visually what it should look like and to make it accessible, and I don't disagree with that component, but we've, according to town staff now, we've already invested 25 or around 25K then just to purchase the equipment as well.
Of a grant, right? We used?
That was a $25,000 grant, so the taxpayer dollars were not from that, it was from a federal grant.
Thank you for clarifying that for me. Okay, thank you.
So, technically speaking, I know it is our money, but we're running out of time on that grant. We've technically, from a budgetary standpoint, spent $0 so far on this park. This would be the first spend, which again, your point not taking that, it's light money, $65,000, could probably build the dog park, right? So, I'm just using that reference because it's later in this motion, by the way, I'm not saying one or the other. Anyone else? Otherwise, I'll call the question. Okay, let's call the question. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. Can I just get you to hold your hands up there? They're kind of, they're there. Okay, that's everybody. Thank you. Next motion would be up to Counselor Neal at this point, which is the updating schedule of fines.
Thank you, worship. This is reference number PS 220607. The subject is updating schedules of fines for Bylaw 18-01, a bylaw to regulate vehicular traffic in the town of St. Andrews. The background reads, "As part of the addition of 30-minute parking spaces and an emergency-only parking space to Bylaw 18-01, a bylaw to regulate vehicular traffic in the town of St. Andrews, administrative penalties need to be added to Schedule J Administrative Penalty Schedule of Fines. With the additional penalties, staff reviewed other communities' fines for parking infractions. Please see Bylaw 18-01 attached for a review of changes. Communities reviewed included Moncton, Freherton, St. John, Campbellton, Quispam, Sis, Zachville, and Rossay. Fines typically range from $20 to $500, with an average being between $50 and $125 for general parking infractions. The town's current range of fines is from $75 to $150. Staff is recommending reductions to the fines with a range of $30 to $125 for the following reasons. One, by decreasing fines, we hope to encourage more payment of fines. Two, hopefully reduce the number of fines going to the court system. Note, the town has proceeded with sending tickets to the court systems. 16 tickets in the last year have gone to the courts. Note that 16.3 has been updated to reflect the new non-vehicular transportation bylaw for the town of St. Andrews. The new schedule of fines puts us in line with all major cities in the town of New Brunswick." The motion reads, "That council amends Schedule J Administrative Penalty Schedule of Fines under Bylaw 18-01, a bylaw to regulate vehicular traffic in the town of St. Andrews, with a new range of fines between $30 and $125, with the inclusion of two new regulations, one, parking beyond the 30-minute parking limit in designated parking spaces, and two, parking in the designated emergency parking space." And I so move this, your honor.
Perfect. So, that was just, I'll look for a secondor actually before I, got Counselor Heenan. Okay, so we have a mover and a secondor. Yeah, this is just updating two things that were not within the schedule, and a reduction in fees, which some may welcome in the community. Any questions on this or any debate? Seeing none, so I will call the question. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, your worship.
That is everybody that has been approved. Okay, so the next one, before we get into it, I did have a conversation with a council member. Did anyone have specific questions regarding count, regarding staff, regarding this next motion?
I do, your honor.
Yeah, so, since there is some questions related specifically to staffing that I was made aware of just prior to the meeting, I would recommend that we actually go to closed session before we talk about this next motion of, that could be entertained in regards to employment matters. I'd rather do that in closed session than not, as it's related to individuals that are employees in the town of St. Andrews. So, with councils, I guess I'll look for a motion to table this till the end of the meeting. Got Counselor Goumachelle seconded by Counselor Heenan. All in favor of tabling this motion to the end of the meeting, please signify by saying aye. That's everybody that's been tabled to the end of the meeting. And jumping back over here, we don't have a motion for Counselor Hurdle, but we do have a conversation in regards to the, we'll do that new business. We'll have a conversation on the tourism information signs, which is in page 50 in your package. I'll pass it over to Mr. Spear or Mr. Knopper.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, worship. This is actually something that's been on the town's radar for several years now. Specifically, it's talking about those information signs, unlike when we have just behind our shoulders here at the top of Harriet and Reed, and then down at the bottom of Harriet and another location or two in town. And it's the signs that point out to the various attractions in town, in some of the areas. Those signs originally put in, we think, in the 90s, and most of them are deteriorating, and some of them are even mislabeled, if you will, with things that aren't quite there or have been relabeled. And so, in the prior council, we had asked for help in trying to design some new signs to give it more of a historical look and to bring them up to date. We'd asked for input from some members of the community, and no one ever got back to us, to be honest. We had, you know, asked, we didn't send them diagrams, we just said, "What should they look like?" So, over the fall and winter, Mr. Acton designed in-house under his own time. I said, "Let's see what we can have here to give you ideas," and I was thinking, these are coming from the Talb funding with the supply chain stuff. I'll be honest, probably a good chance these won't be ready for the summer, but we'd like to move forward with something and at least get your input on what you like or what process you would like, because those signs, we are starting to get complaints on the current ones there, and that, well, I'd just like to get your input on if you kind of like the new logo, and then who you'd like to consult with us, and anything, direction you can give staff, just so we don't take on on our own without some type of input from council, and if you'd like to pursue this initiative and what you feel would be the next steps.
Perfect. So, is it safe to assume that you're looking for feedback on pages 52, 53, 54?
Yes, if you'd like any of them, or if you have a preferred one, and then what next steps, if you'd like to involve either community group, or at least Talb, and/or BIA, and/or Chamber, et cetera.
Okay, let's just, let's just pick one and then send it to one of these organizations just for feedback. Does that make the most sense? And then, if there's any concern, personally, to make this easy, I prefer 52 over 53 and 54. Does anyone agree with me?
52 is the first.
Correct, yeah, it's this one right here.
I like 52.
Okay, just a quick show of hands, if you prefer 52? All right, anyone prefer a different one?
Nay.
Which one do you like?
Sorry to be the nay guy. Well, I think, given what the CAO was saying about how we wouldn't have these until next summer, I think we have the whole winter to put our way at it. I think that signage is very important. There's no, like, active transportation or trail signs, you know, you could, you could pack more into those signs, I think, with a little bit of thought, and we have a lot of creative people in our community, and I think with something to start from, we would get a lot of feedback. I think just putting it out there, "Do you want to help?", doesn't really get a lot of response sometimes, but if we have something concrete to show them, you know, with one of our surveys or da-da-da, I think we would get a lot of feedback and could really come up with something that, not saying these aren't great, but we would cover more of our bases.
Perfect. Just to clarify that, though, is the items that are listed on there aren't necessarily the items, it's just a concept design, but your point, maybe someone has a better idea that you're proposing. Myself, I think we put out our proposal, get feedback, and if someone wants to come forward with a better idea, doesn't mean we're necessarily going ahead with it, but Counselor Heenan?
I've had a couple of issues with tourists about putting one on our board here for the open center or for our welcome center. Like, we don't have a sign on our new signpost yet.
Yeah, it says Chamber, I was hoping it said Visitor Center as well.
Yeah, but see, we've had, like, I've had a couple of people stop me and say, "Oh, I hear you're a counselor," and I said, "Yeah, how can I help?", or something like that, you know? And they said, "Well, you know, we look for the Visitor Center, we look for a sign, and there isn't one." So, really, we should have something out here that says Visitor Center, because you have to really look at the arena in order to see it.
Yeah, I agree, and we could talk sign placement after the, fundamentally, you could change that by the sign that's down here by, on Harriet. It's already past your decision point where you've already picked what lane you're in.
Yes, that's correct.
Actually, before, so it'd give you an opportunity to give a reference to where the Visitor Center is.
That's what, yeah.
We could catch that one, but again, this is, this was designed, so.
Okay, well, 52 suits me. I'm one for 52.
All right, just all in favor of 52, just to.
I have a question.
Yep.
Are there going to be more places than just the four?
Yeah, it's just, just an example.
So, it's just an example, all right. I have no problem with 52.
All in favor of 52? Just a quick show of hands? Okay, all opposed? Four to two, we're going to take that forward, get some feedback from, I would say, the BIA, the Chamber, and Talb, just for feedback. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to recognize Mr. Terry Acton for the amount of skills he has. He's truly a Renaissance man, and the amount of things he does for us, and can just whip up in his imagination a short period of time. He impresses me every day, so I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Acton.
He does, and he has, he can very much put on a nice Christmas light show, too, so.
He's got his imagination.
He inspired me. So, the, we'll move around to the next one, which is Counselor Goumachelle.
Thank you, worship. The next one is RCS 220404.
The next one is RCS 220404, submitted by myself, and the subject is bylaw number 22-03, a bylaw to regulate non-vehicular transportation in the town of St. Andrews, second and third reading. The background reads, council has been reviewing and moving forward with bylaw 22-03, a bylaw to regulate non-vehicular transportation to replace bylaw 01-5, a bylaw to regulate skateboards and inline skates and scooters. The town has completed the following steps. Discussions at the May 19th and May 2nd council meetings, first reading, May 16, 2022, public hearing of objections, June 6, 2022, discussions of June 6, 2022 council meeting. Also, council directed staff to bring back a modified version of the bylaw from discussions at the June 6, 2022 meeting. This version of the bylaw was put on the town website for review. Council can now move the bylaw to second and third reading. And the action, the motion reads, excuse me, that council grants leap for second reading of bylaw number 22-03, a bylaw to regulate non-vehicular transportation in the town of St. Andrews, and that be moved by myself.
Okay, secondar. Counselor Neal. We talked about this one a few times, discussion. Counselor Guma Shell.
Sorry, just quickly, I noticed in, when we cut back a lot of things out of the bylaw, some things were left in the, in the definitions, for example, trail. Trail is listed in the definitions as a street and as a skate park, and then there's no reference to those things in the actual, in the actual meat of the bylaw, in the actual bylaw itself. So I think those things should probably be taken out, that we don't need definitions that, in a bylaw, that aren't referred to in the, in the actual bylaw.
Perfect. I'll refer to town staff, is there any advantage of doing that, or can we remove them?
No issue to remove them.
Can you repeat those for me, Counselor Guma Shell?
So 1.14, trail, 1.13, street, 1.12, skate park, one sidewalk, I think, should be, maybe should, could be left.
Yeah.
And, thank you, so that would be my, my first bit of discussion or suggestion.
Okay, so we're removing 1.1, in definitions, 1.12, 1.13, 1.14. So, that's kind of an amendment, would that not be amendment? That'd be amendment, right? So you remove to amend?
Yes, and I would have a second amendment as well.
Okay, let's do it all the same, go ahead.
One at a time? Okay, sorry, pardon me.
You can amend all those definitions at once and then for your next, sorry. Amend all at once and then for your next motion to amend, then body.
Okay.
Do you want to separate those, then?
Not the three definitions, you can just say to remove, to remove definitions 1.12, 1.13, and 1.14 in the first motion, and then we can discuss a second.
So, so we need a secondar for that, then, do we not, for the amendment? Counselor Neal, you second on that?
Can I just add one extra part to this, since we're dealing with the definitions?
I think we would have to, you need a secondar first, technically.
Just a second.
All right, so we have a secondar for the amendment, all in favor of that amendment, please signify by saying aye.
You can.
Anyone opposed to that amendment?
We can.
Okay, so that was carried. So, we got another amendment now, so I should address that one as well, right? So we address these one by one, correct? Okay, Counselor Neal, you have an amendment to propose?
Just a point of clarification into the definition while we were dealing with those, the definition for the e-bikes, the last line there says that they typically travel speeds up to 45 kilometers an hour, but in New Brunswick, at least, they are regulated to 32 kilometers an hour, so I just thought we should change that while we're cleaning these up.
Okay, I don't have any background on that, but you seem more knowledgeable than me, but does that mean that, why do we even have the speed limit on this? Because with technology and stuff, that could change any given time, and if it goes faster than that, is it no longer?
Well, again, they're actually, again, in New Brunswick, they're regulated, they're not allowed to have a motor more powerful than 500 watts and cannot travel faster than 32 kilometers an hour.
Well, you could actually just leave it at electric bikes, use rechargeable batteries, and leave the speeds right off it, then, would that make sense to everybody? Does that make sense for you as the amendment, Counselor Neal? Okay, secondar for that amendment?
Can we add, can I be further to his amendment? Because in the same vein.
Let's, yeah, let's, let's, a lot of amendments on the fly here, but keep.
In the same vein, to what Counselor Neal was saying, things that are electric, like the scooters, electric scooters, electric skateboards, and electric bikes, all need more, actually, better language in a separate place that address this. I know the province is working on some things with regard to e-bikes, but also electric skateboards, electric scooters, and mobility scooters, all electrically powered, should be dropped from this bylaw and addressed at a different time, under a separate bylaw.
Yeah, that's a significant change, I'd consider that a significant change.
Just dropping, dropping things from the language that weren't in the original bylaw, which we, which was, this was to repeal, and the original bylaw was against skateboard, scooters, and inline skates, and we're repealing that, and somehow, we've gotten into discussions about e-bikes, e-skateboards, and mobility scooters, which should really be done at a different time, under a different bylaw.
Okay, my only fear is that if we remove it, then it might not be subject to travel in a matter that a speed appropriate to the surface, so if we repeal it altogether, then that, the speed appropriate almost doesn't apply to them, is my fear.
Through your worship, council asked us to design a bylaw that actually encompassed all non-vehicular transportation within the community, that included mobility scooters to electric bikes, which included everything now that's on their hoverboards, which are electric, and within those processes. If you wish to remove those now, you can, but this was the direction that was provided by council, so I'll leave that to council's final decision.
Is it safe to say, Counselor Guma Shell, without making assumptions, that you think there might be additional regulations needed for these?
Thank you, Your Worship, yes. I think that e-bikes, there's different categories of e-bikes, and as you mentioned, the technology's changing, and I think that having, we're, having the definition of e-bikes in this bylaw will make it more difficult in the future to, to specifically address e-bikes, e-scooters, e-skateboards, all these things are coming, and I think we need, we can be out ahead of it rather than, than behind it by having this in the, in a, in a bylaw, which was really addressing non-electric means of transport.
My initial reaction, I'll call for a secondar, is just, I would leave it in and then amend it in the future when we know what that looks like, just so it's all under one bylaw, would that make the most sense to staff?
Your worship, it seems, I guess we thought this was going to be a fairly quick run-through tonight, our recommendation at this point is to table it, because we're kind of going to confuse the heck, we're going to second and third reading on something we've just slashed and burned, so.
I don't think that taking out, taking out language that's not, that wasn't in the spirit of the original bylaws is, is.
But my fear, though, is the definition of a bicycle is pedaled by rider's feet. If you take this out, the respectful rules that you have in place in this bylaw will not apply to e-bikes.
And we just take e-bike out completely, e-scooter, e-scooter mobility.
But you will be, by doing that, saying that this bylaw only applies to people that are using their feet, people that are using electric means can, will have no, will not be subject to the same terms. So they'll have, they'll be able to do more. They could swerve in the street, there's nothing within our town bylaws to stop that, just to be clear.
Well, that would be something to address.
Let's look for a secondar for that, can we have a secondar for that amendment, then? Any secondar? So no secondar on that one, so the, any other amendments? Okay, then, at this point, I'll have to, do we vote on that amendment by Counselor Neal?
No, I don't believe we do.
No, all right, so sorry, we'll, we'll, he seconded it, that'd be removing 1.12, 1.13, and 1.14. All in favor of removing those, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, this is Counselor Neal's amendment?
He seconded, I believe, wasn't it?
Sorry, Your Worship, you had already passed amendment for 1.12, 1.13, 1.14.
Perfect, thank you.
What you were amending was the 32 kilometers an hour to the section 1.2e bikes.
Perfect, thank you, thank you for taking me back.
At this point, we could just take out the last.
So, I'll be looking for amendment to remove the, and typically travel at speeds of up to 45 kilometers per hour, could I have a mover on that? Counselor Guma Shell, seconded by Counselor Heenan, all in favor of that amendment, please signify by saying aye. That's everybody, that has been amended. Any other amendments? Okay, I'll call the question, all, sorry, mover for this motion?
I have a question.
Is it regarding the motion? Because we need a mover and a secondar, and then we'll, at that point, sorry for the confusion, guys, very rare when you have four amendments happening at once. A mover on the motion first, and then we can discuss it and ask questions. Counselor Blanchard, secondar, Counselor Hurdle, we're now open for discussions on this motion.
All right, well, first off, I think the council has spent far too long, and staff has spent far too long on this, it started off as a simple, simple concept of what we were going to do with skateboards, scooters on the town plat, in the four blocks, and now, all of a sudden, we have a document that's like, and I understand, we did ask for clarification, so I'm not denying that, but I think we've got way off the track of what this initial conversation started out as, because quite frankly, when I read through it all, I think this is, you know, it, it's too much for a small town to have so many details. We started out with a, with a simple thing of yes or no, we're going to allow skateboard, scooters, and bicycles on the four blocks in the town, and it's come out to something like this, and we've wasted tons of time on it, and I just, I just don't think we're any further ahead. That's just my feeling.
Thank you, Counselor Eadie. Any other member of council to add anything, otherwise we'll call the question. Okay, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that's a four to two, and you captured all the nays, Mr. Knopper? Perfect, thank you. All right, so I'm going to go to second reading, believe it or not, we have to do it again. So, at this time, I will read by title, bylaw number 22-03, a bylaw to regulate the use of non-vehicular transportation within the town of St. Andrews. One is definitions, two is non-vehicle transportation, three is administrative penalty, four is repeal provision. This was read the first time the sixth day of June 2022, and read the second time the 20th day of June 2022, and we'll go to the next motion, Counselor Guma Shell.
Oh, thank you. The motion that council leaves grant for third and final reading of bylaw 22-03, a bylaw to regulate non-vehicular transportation in the town of St. Andrews, and moved by myself.
Perfect, and this will be the one that we previously read, just to remind everyone, so all those amendments are still captured in this one. A secondar on this motion, Counselor Blanchard, we'll open up discussion once again. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Acton, rather.
Thank you. I'm not opposed to this amendment, I think we've put our staff through all the bells and whistles, hoops or jumps, and, but I'm still against the scooters and whatnot downtown in the downtown area. That's why I voted against it, because I feel that, and a lot of seniors have stopped me to talk to me about their concerns. I know I've heard from families and whatnot about them with their kids downtown, I have no problems with that, but I still have problems with a scooter being able to stop via, with a motor on it, or via it with a guy who's pedaling along the road. I just think for a four-block radius throughout the summer, with the number of people that we have downtown, with our seniors, that we should be more concerned, but I'm just voicing my opinion, and I'm still against it, because I feel it is an endangerment to those people that we are representing for the town of St. Andrews. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else? Counselor Hurdle?
Thank you, Your Worship, I just, I mean, this is obviously a difficult conversation, difficult debate to have around this, and I'll be honest, I have heard from people in the community as well, I mean, I'm the son of, of two seniors who like to be able to walk around the community as well, so it was with considerable consideration, the decision that I made to, to vote in favor of this, and I don't want it to seem like I'm not considering the safety of the people in the community, but when I look at an issue like this, you know, I think about, first, you know, if I were to be riding a bike in downtown St. Andrews, and I were to see a crowd of people, or people moving slowly or with difficulty, I would get off my bike. If I was skateboarding downtown, I would get off my skateboard, and I look around the room, and I can see everybody in this room would do the, the same thing. And so, when we're talking about who, who wouldn't do that, we're talking about the people who are, who are bad operators, who are operating these unsafely, and there is a part of this bylaw that speaks specifically to that, so if you're riding your bike downtown in a way that's not safe to yourself or other people, that is still against the bylaw, there's nothing that changes that, so that still takes into consideration the safety of other people and the ability of other people to get around. But what we're not doing is we're not punishing the positive users, the people in the community who I know, who I look around and see, who I trust, to operate things like a bicycle or a scooter, or a skateboard safely and responsibly, and I think it's, it's, it's not right for us, essentially, to, to limit the usage of these things that enable people to get around in ways that aren't by using a car, and aren't parking, you know, taking up a parking space downtown. We should allow that to take place, and not judge those users by the, by what we fear the worst users to use. And conversely, if we're talking about bad operators who are bicyclists, and we're trying to stop them by taking away their bicycle, what's stopping them from getting into a car, and also being a bad operator downtown, too? So, I think by, by, you know, I don't want it to make it seem like I'm not being considerate of the safety of others, but I do trust the people in my community to operate things safely, and this is an opportunity for us to, to place our trust in the community, and those are my two cents about it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hurdle. Anyone else, otherwise I'll call the question. Okay, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Once again, four to, so that has been carried. I will read again by title, but I will read section 2.0, just so the public is aware of what, at the end of the day, what kind of the regulations are involved, because to Counselor Hurdle's point is, yes, skateboard, scooters, and inline skates are now allowed in the town of St. Andrews, but they're only allowed if the operator is being responsible at the end of the day. So, this is bylaw number 22-03, a bylaw to regulate the use of non-vehicular transportation within the town of St. Andrews. One is definitions, two is non-vehicle transportation. 2.1 says, every person who is riding or operating a bicycle, inline skates, quad skate, scooters, and skateboards, electric or person-powered, shall at times, 2.11, exercise due care and attention to their safety and the safety of others. 2.12, travel in a manner and at a speed appropriate to the surface being traveled upon. 2.2 is, no person shall ride or operate a bicycle, inline skates, quad skate, scooters, or skateboards, electric or person-powered, in such a manner to cause any damage to public or private property. Three is administrative penalty, four is repeal provision. This was read the first time the 16th day of May, and the public hearing objections was the sixth day of June 2022. It was read a second time on the 20th day of June 2022, and read again for the third and final time on the 20th day of June 2022. So, again, this change has been made, but again, there is still regulations in play, where if someone is not operating properly, bylaw enforcement very well will be involved. So, that ends a very long debate that certainly had a lot of conversation over the last two months. So, at this point, let's jump back into the agenda. Give me one moment. So at that point, that is the only one, oh, we've got the dog park concept update, so that is RCS 220610, it's on page 61 of your council package, and I'll pass it over to Mr. Spear or Mr. Knopper at this point to, to comment in particular on a couple of different options.
Thank you, Your Worship. So, based on the presentation that was provided at the June 6 meeting, council directed staff to look at options within the town limits for what we could propose as dog parks, so provided with you are two concepts, location one is the Harry Mallory Sports Field, location two is the green space along the Queen Street extension near the point. So these designs were done by Mr. Acton, that included the size of the particular park that the, the dog park folks were looking at, as well as looking at options for washroom locations, walkability, how close we could get to the downtown, as well as just overall general design and look and feel. So, provided with you in location one, so that, I'll note that these concepts, we will be speaking with the Dog Park Committee this week, so just to keep that in mind, that we're seeking council's opinion on which direction you would like us to go, and note that they are looking to fundraise to help support this project. So, location one was the Harry Mallory Sports Field, so this would be located behind the ball fields, adjacent to the washrooms, there's lots of parking, it's based, however, this project, we would have to clear the wooded area, remove the stumps, and the, and put in a proper base, topsoil, ditching, water lines, grass seating, and fencing, and signage.
and fencing, and signage. It's estimated at this point of about $106,000 with tax to do that project. Extras that would be, that could be considered are, again, are benches, garbage cans, and other bag dispensers. Option two, that is provided here as well, so this is on the Queen Street extension. This is more closely related to where the trails are. Now, I will note that location one will also be close to the trails with the new connections along Katie's Cove and the Cemetery Road, so there would be trail access. Option two is, again, at the end of Queen Street extension, a little less work would need to be done here. We would do the work with the bush hogging in the area, removing some of the trees, again, adding topsoil, adding the water line so that we could access for dog water. Grass seating, fencing, and signage. It's estimated at about $49,000. It's a little smaller of an area, however, key features are, it's a lot, it's close to Water Street, it's close to the point, it's close to the campground area, as well as we have options of actually building an additional parking area out of gravel in that zone, and it's right close to the public works. In addition, in future developments, the council has talked to us about is, you know, washroom building down along the point. So again, washrooms would be potentially close access in the near future. So there would be extras, again, similar to benches, garbage cans, bag dispensers, and again, the road gravel work there to increase a little bit of parking space for that zone. So both are relatively good options, they just have varying different costs and location-wise. So it's to you, council, for your opinion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Knopper. And it's safe to assume that the proposal that was made very nicely by the, the dog park associate, I guess, the group, I don't know what they have official title yet, but staff does not recommend putting out at the water tower simply for the fact that we have future water, maybe a new water tower, and who knows what the future brings, that that could be moved, and there's a lot of unknowns around that. So these two locations are preferred by staff. Over to you, council, if you have a preference. One is half the price of the other, but they are two unique locations. Obviously, Harry Mallory Sports Field, the big advantage of it is, is that there's already existing washroom facility there. The other one is kind of close to some washroom options, but future ones for sure, and close to a walking trail as well. So Counselor Hurdle, thoughts?
Thank you, worship. I guess for the, the second, the Queen Street extension, my main concern here is just the proximity of residents. Like, it's pretty much in their backyard and could substantially impact the quality of, you know, being able to spend time in their yard, if there's dogs barking there all, all the time, not to say that that would happen. So, you know, the other one is quite, it's remote, but it's, you know, it's a little more free, it's, it's not in somebody's backyard, and, you know, if a dog were to get freed down that area, I think it's less of a risk to the dog, too, and it's down by the sports field. But I do have one quick question, just about the layout of this, so I understand that the sports field's actually down here, right? Okay, perfect. Yeah, thank you.
Your worship, just one clarifying point on option two, so you are aware, the town actually owns the, the property that runs all the way, that green space all the way to Water Street, and that the, the residents of that area, like where the fence line is, where it's shown on there, is really their backyard. So it is all of town property from that Queen Street extension to Water Street.
Perfect. So staff is looking for direction from us on a preference to start discussing what it could look like with this group, because they committed to doing some fundraising with us to make this a reality. I would say that there's even a legitimate argument that this could be another project that goes through the tourism accommodation levy, as visitors are looking for a place, as well as, as residents alike. Again, it's another feature, another attraction, another thing for people to use in the community. I will say that Mr. Acton, once again, nailed the sign, if that's who did that one. I love that sign. So council, I don't know if you want to just do a quick preference to, or if you have an alternative solution, but a quick preference to location, because you have Counselor Neal's hand before we go there.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, it's just a question, I guess, for staff, when we go back to them. Is it worth going back to them and asking if they are interested in, like, not necessarily 100% cleared piece of land? I know, I spoke to a couple of them, and I know one of the options they threw around was actually what they called a wooded dog park. I'm just, I guess, wondering if we could, you know, drastically reduce some of the costs if we're not clear-cutting the whole area, not removing all of the trees. I mean, as far as I know, dogs love trees. So, you know, just the trees, the grubbing of the stumps, it seems like there might be a compromise there. I was just wondering if it'd be worth taking that back to them.
They'll be well-watered trees. Over to you, Mr. Spear, Mr. Knopper. All options are on the tables, my assumption.
The first has to do with the location down at the Queen Street extension. One favorable thing about that, it's probably the most walkable for pet owners, just to think about as we're trying to green the, the town a little bit, that the Harry Mallory Sports Field would probably be, a lot of people would be driving their pets up to it, it's just that much out of the way. And so, yes, it is doable by the trails, and there'd be certainly a portion of the population that'll take their dogs and do the long walk. But I think that down where it is, you'd probably have act, like, foot traffic accessibility by a lot more people, in my opinion. The other thing, it's interesting what Counselor Neal has said about the wooded areas. My only concern, I guess, we'd have to talk to them about it, I have concerns that people would potentially lose visibility of their dogs a little bit, so, you know what I mean? Like, it gets behind a tree, and then how they interact and stuff, but on the flip side, if it's done right, I can see where it'd be a good thing, too, like, it's the dogs, like trees. So we'll certainly talk to the, to the association and see their thoughts on it.
Okay. Any preferences here? We'll call one, we'll call one the one on 62, the other on page 63. So I know you're on a tablet, Counselor Blanchard, but 62 is the Harry Mallory Sports Field, 63 is, we'll call it the Queen Street extension. Show of hands, those that prefer Harry Mallory Sports Field. Might not get consensus, but I'm trying anyway. The next one would be the Queen Street extension preference. So it looks like majority prefer Queen Street. So let's have a conversation on that. There obviously is a lot more conversations, and I think that we would owe a, a public presentation as well, if that is something that they're palatable to, just because, to your point, if they're a neighbor, they should at least need an opportunity, and I would recommend actually having hearing of objections on that, even though we may not have to. I think it's the appropriate thing to do. All right. That gave some consensus on that one. Let me jump back into it. I think at that point, that is on now to Counselor Heenan. I know we took care of his last one, but he still has two more items that have multiple motions.
All right, your worship, thank you. And council, thank you. My first one is PED 220611, Amendment MP 20-06 to the Town of St. Andrews Municipal Plan, MP 20-01, for 302 Moat Drive, first reading. The Town of St. Andrews has received a zoning request that requires a municipal plan amendment for 302 Moat Drive. Compass Housing Incorporated at PID number 01325521 is seeking a municipal plan amendment to the generalized future land use map to move from commercial designation to residential designation for the purpose of developing a 42-unit apartment complex. The following steps have been completed in the process. One, public presentation on municipal plan amendment as per the Community Planning Act, Section 59, Bracket 1, on June 20, 2022. The next steps is first reading, obtain views of the Planning Advisory Committee, public hearings of objection, second reading, and third reading. Please see Amendment MP 20-06 attached with this report. Your worship, the motion is that council grants leave for the first reading to the municipal plan amendment, MP 20-06, to the Town of St. Andrews Municipal Plan, MP 20-01, for Compass Housing Incorporated at PID number 01325521, 302 Moat Drive, to move from commercial designation to residential designation on the generalized future land use map, and I so move it, your worship.
Thank you, seconder. Deputy Mayor Akagi, discussion. Counselor Hurdle?
Thank you, worship. I'm, I've lost it in here now, but I think I read that this is, there's two addresses, 310 Moat and 302 Moat. It can, there'd be some clarification, is it both the same, or?
It's 302 Moat, is what we'll be using for the process of this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Call the question. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's everybody, so I will go to first reading. This is bylaw number MP 20-06, a bylaw to amend bylaw number MP 20-01, being the municipal plan bylaw for the Town of St. Andrews. Being enacted by the council of the Town of St. Andrews as follows. Number one, bylaw number MP 20-01, the municipal plan bylaw for the Town of St. Andrews is amended by changing the designation as shown on the generalized future land use map attached to said bylaws, Schedule A thereof, for the land shown on Schedule 1 attached here, too, and forming part hereof, from commercial designation to residential designation, read the first time the 20th day of June 2022. Next motion.
Thank you, worship. Motion that council requests the views of the Planning Advisory Committee for the Town of St. Andrews as per Section 110 of the Community Planning Act on Municipal Plan Amendment, MP 20-06, to the Town of St. Andrews Municipal Plan, MP 20-01, for Compass Housing Incorporated, PID 01325521, 302 Moat Drive, to move from commercial designation to residential designation on the generalized future land use map, and I so move this.
Seconder? I've got Counselor Blanchard by a hair over Counselor Goumichel. This, is it bad that this is my excitement? Any discussion on this motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, your worship.
That's everybody, so that one has been approved. We're going to the Planning Advisory Committee, and the last one.
Okay, your worship, thank you. That council sets the date of July the 4th, 2022, at 6:30 PM at the WCO O'Neill Arena Council Chambers for a public hearing of objections as per Section 111 of the Community Planning Act on the Municipal Plan Amendment, MP 20-06, to the Town of St. Andrews Municipal Plan, MP 20-01, for Compass Housing Incorporated, PID 01325521, at 302 Moat Drive, to move from commercial designation to residential designation on the generalized future land use. I so move this, your worship.
Deputy Mayor Akagi, a second at that discussion? All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, your worship.
That's everybody, and we're on to the next motions.
All right. Thank you. PED 220612, Amendment of Z 22-02 to the Town of St. Andrews zoning bylaw, Z 22-01, for 302 Moat Drive, first reading. The Town of St. Andrews has received a rezoning request for 302 Moat Drive. Compass Housing Incorporated at PID 01325521 is seeking a rezoning from tourist commercial zone to municipal, to multiple residential 2-zone, for the purposes of developing a 42-unit apartment complex. The following steps need to be completed before rezoning is approved. One, first reading. Second, obtain views of the Planning Advisory Committee. Three, public hearings of objections. Four, second reading. Five, third reading. Please see Amendment Z 22-02 attached to this report. And the motion is that council grants leave for first reading of the zoning bylaw amendment, Z 22-02, to the Town of St. Andrews zoning bylaw, Z 22-01, for Compass Housing Incorporated at PID number 01325521, at 302 Moat Drive, to move from tourism commercial to multiple residential 2-zone, and I so move.
Thank you, seconder. Counselor Neal, discussion? All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's everybody. This is bylaw number Z 22-02, a bylaw to amend bylaw number Z 22-01, being the zoning bylaw for the Town of St. Andrews. Being enacted by the council of the Town of St. Andrews as follows. Number one, bylaws, number Z 22-01, the zoning bylaw for the Town of St. Andrews is amended by changing the zone as shown on the zoning map attached to the said bylaw, as Schedule A thereof, of the land shown on Schedule 1 attached here, too, and forming part hereof, from tourist commercial zone to high-density, multiple residential zone, MR2, that is. This is read the first time on the 20th day of June 2022. Thank you, council. Appreciate you going through those motions. We did have one that we did at table earlier, so I got it.
Your worship, you've got two more there.
I'm getting way ahead of myself. We have two more on that one.
Thank you, worship and council. Motion that council requests the views of the Planning Advisory Committee for the Town of St. Andrews as per Section 110 of the Community Planning Act on zoning bylaw amendment, Z 22-02, to the Town of St. Andrews zoning bylaw, Z 22-01, for Compass Housing Incorporated at PID number 01325521, 302 Moat Drive, to move from tourist commercial zone to multiple residential 2-zone, and I so move.
Seconder? Counselor Hurdle, discussion? All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's everybody. That one has been approved, and the last one.
Thank you, worship. That council, a motion that council sets the date of Monday, July the 4th, 2022, at 6:30 PM at the WCO O'Neill Arena Council Chambers for public hearing of objections as per Section 111 of the Community Planning Act on zoning bylaw amendment, Z 22-02, to the Town of St. Andrews zoning bylaw, Z 22-01, for Compass Housing Incorporated at PID number 01325521, 302 Moat Drive, to move, move from tourist commercial zone to multiple residential 2-zone, and I so move.
Thank you, seconder. Deputy Mayor Akagi, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's everybody, so that one has been approved.
Counsel, just for clarification, they both are at the same time, because we're dealing with the same PID and the same property, so we've done this prior, and it's fine with under the Community Planning Act.
Perfect, that's great. Makes a lot, makes a lot of sense than having two separate. So we have two things that are outstanding. We have a motion that we needed to go to closed session to have a conversation prior to. We also have review of the registers. I think for the sake of public transparency, it makes sense to do the review of registers.
Your, your worship, you also have the King Street Road additional amendment.
Oh, sorry, yes, under new business, thank you. This has been one all over the map tonight. New business, we'll go over to Counselor Hurdle, thank you for that reminder.
Thank you, worship. This is in reference to BTHC 220606. The subject is the King Street Road closure request for Farmers Market, June 30, 2022. And the background is, leading up to the Canada Day celebrations on July 1, Public Works will be preparing Market Square with a stage and bleachers. We currently have a conflict of use of space as the Farmers Market would normally take place in Market Square during the time that Public Works needs to set up. To keep the Farmers Market in the downtown, the alternative location normally used is King Street between Water Street and Queen Street. Staff is seeking a motion of council to close King Street between Water Street and Queen Street on June 30, 2022, from 7:30 AM to 2:00 PM. Note that there are 48 vendors that participate in the Farmers Market. Staff will ensure businesses are notified on the street of the closure, along with the road closure information for Canada Day. And the motion before us is that council approves the road closure of King Street from Water Street to Queen Street from 7:30 AM to 2:00 PM on Thursday, June 30, 2022, for the St. Andrews Farmers Market, and I so move.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Discussion on this one? Okay. Oh, we do. Counselor Goumichel.
I just, thank you, worship, through you for the CAO. Will all of the Farmers Market have to move? Can we not fit them in around the bleachers? Some of them move?
No, because the Public Works crew will be in there with trucks and stuff, moving the bleachers and stuff, so they don't want to shut off the whole downtown on Wednesday in order to accommodate them on Thursday, so it's just too much traffic going back and forth. Gotcha. Thank you.
Counselor Hurdle?
Thank you, worship. Will the Farmers Market still be there for Canada Day itself?
Yes, on King Street.
On, on both.
They'll have to tear down and set back up, but they're going to be in King Street for both days.
Both days, okay. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's everybody, so that has been carried. Now, I'm not getting ahead of myself, so we have two things left. We have the review of the registers, plus we have to go to closed session. I would recommend reviewing registers first, just so that way it's done in a more public format. It has been a long meeting already, so I don't want to rush these, I just want council's feedback. We haven't reviewed the registers as a group in a while, did you want to do it this evening? We can always table it, right? Staff's fine, it's more for your information. So, council, what's your pleasure?
Table.
Table? If there's anything that any of you are wondering at any given time, just reach out to myself, or Paul, or Chris, and we can happily bring you up. We just want to always give you the option, because we haven't done it in a while. And we don't really want to take a Saturday up in the summer to, to do a work session if we don't have to, right? to, right?
Still planning to have a set of meetings, so.
Yeah, so we, we, the last one, we got kind of caught up in housing conversations. We never got through the register, but that's where we really want to do it, right? So we, we should schedule that. And again, it is optional. At the end of the day, it's a work session, so those that want to be there can. But we should line one of those up and make it optional. Myself, I prefer evenings than weekends, my, just personally.
Do the nature of it, that we could do by Zoom. It's up to council, but sometimes it's a little more.
I would highly recommend Zoom for that one, too. Okay. Anyone wants to come over to my house and sit beside me, they can. Okay, we're gonna, I just need a motion to table that off the agenda, just to make it formal. Counselor Hurdle, seconded by Counselor Blanchard. All in favor of tabling, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, you got a half hour of your night back. All right, so before we go to closed session, in regards to, I guess, a, employment matter, do you have the section by chance?
I'll pull it up here.
I will do question period first, but was there anyone online before I get you to do two things at once, that wanted to ask any questions?
So there are two people online. You have Ms. Tressa Bevington and Mr. Vic Miller. If either of you would like to speak to counsel, can you please raise your hand on your system?
Well, you can do that in our comments.
I'll give you one last call. Can you please raise your hand on your system, anybody? There we go. Nope, good.
I'm good.
No questions, Your Worship.
Okay, perfect. Any questions from our packed audience right now at this point? We lost a lot of people this evening.
I feel like I should just, just.
Do you have a question for our planners?
How'd you get so good at what you do?
Thank you. I like this. Any more questions? I, I like those questions. All right, so that, within question period, counselor and deputy mayor's comments. I don't have anything, but I'd like Deputy Mayor Akaji to speak a little bit about tomorrow.
Tomorrow is Indigenous Day throughout Canada and North America. And thanks to our staff, especially Mr. Knopper, we were, they applied and got a grant, and the chief and his counsel, his staff worked. And tomorrow, there will be an Indigenous Day at Centennial Park, and it'll start at nine o'clock in the morning with opening ceremonies. There'll be drumming, there will be traditional foods, there will be, you know, activities. I'm not sure what activities they're doing, but it will be nice if you come down and see for yourself, and just wander through. The opening ceremonies will be at nine o'clock, and I think the mayor will be there to address, as well as, as the, the chief and his counsel will be there, probably, to do the opening and welcoming. So it'll be a nice day tomorrow for Indigenous Day, and that includes the NUE and the Métis, so it's everybody included tomorrow from nine o'clock in the morning till around about one or so. So I look forward to seeing you tomorrow, as do as many counselors that will be there, and all the people of St. Andrews out and about. Thank you very much. And the other thing I'd like to address is, today I went to the New Brunswick Community College graduation in St. Andrews, and it was very nice to have a face-to-face graduation after three years of no graduations. And it was wonderful. It was a well-done graduation, and very honored to be there as representative for the Indigenous side, as the Indigenous advisor couldn't be there. And so I was asked to come and step in her place, and to be there for the town, because I wear those two hats quite well, I hope. And the mayor allows me to do that, so I thank him very much for allowing me to do that. And as well, I, I did go to the high school to, at Kingsbury, to speak with students there about Indigenous Day and residential schools, and, and try and promote it through them, because I like to see the youth out there as well. So I look forward to seeing them tomorrow. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on it. Thank you, counsel, for supporting the Indigenous side of you, of St. Andrews. I look forward to seeing you tomorrow, or as many people as I can. And CHCO TV for covering it. I thank you very much for doing that. And I'm sure the chief and his staff and counsel will be very happy to see you tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else? All right. So at this time, at 8:24 PM, I'll be looking for a mover to go into closed session as per.
One J, Labor and Employment Matters, including the negotiation of collective agreements.
Thank you very much. So could I have a mover for that? Counselor Heenan, seconded by Counselor Gubashel. All in favor of going to closed session? We are now in closed session. We'll give just a few moments for everybody to shut down. Thank you very much.